As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, their Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly. I'll go ahead and call this meeting, James City County Board of Supervisors order at 5:00 PM. Mr. Stevens, you call the roll, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District and is vice chair to the board. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District and is chair of the board. Sitting to my far right is Adam Kinsman County Attorney. I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it is my pleasure to be clerk to the board. All present.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm requesting amendment to the agenda to add a closed session item related to one of the boards and commissions and for a property discussion. May I have a motion to amend the agenda?
移到
So moved. Ms. Stevens, you call the roll, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. First, before we have a moment of silence, we have a pledge leader, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McGlinnan, and you introduce the pledge leader tonight, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Jennifer Estrada Guzman and Yancel Zacharias, who are here tonight with their faculty sponsor, Dr. Tamara Priestley. These students, along with another student, Eco La Harazo Sanchez, are students at Jamestown High School and members of the International Club. Under the guidance of their faculty sponsor, Dr. Priestley, they volunteered their time and efforts this summer to offer a series of evening programs at James River Elementary School and the Abram Frink Community Center for Spanish-speaking residents of James City County. They organized games for the kids and adults, provided access to many services that the county provides, connected them with a number of different organizations, and distributed backpacks filled with school supplies to dozens of children. Their work resulted in collaboration with James River Elementary School, the James River PTA, our Parks and Recreation Department, Williamsburg Regional Library, and others. Along with Dr. Priestley, they deserve great credit for seeing a need in the community and filling it. It's my pleasure to have the students come forward to lead us in the pledge after a moment of silence, and then give them some certificates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have some certificates for you, and Dr. Priestley, would you come up, please, too, as well? And maybe we could get a picture or a couple of words.
Sure. Want us to go down there?
Do you want to just stand up here?
Sure.
Okay. So, Yancel? That's for you, and here's the...
Feel comfortable just taking your mask off for a second to photograph that? All right. Next is our public comment. Do we have any speaker cards? No speaker cards for public comment. Consent counted as done. Next, we'll go into public hearings. Number one, ordinance to amend County Code Section 2-16.2. Liz, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Hippel, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Virginia Code permits localities by ordinance to dispose of unclaimed personal property in the possession of its local law enforcement agencies by either sale or retention for use. Our county code, Section 2-16.2, allows for disposition of unclaimed property only through sale, so it has not been updated to allow our local law enforcement agencies to use unclaimed property should they deem that useful. Our police department has asked to update that section to conform with the Virginia Code, and the attached ordinance does allow local law enforcement to retain unclaimed property for use. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right. That sounds good. Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and take this public hearing and look for a motion or discussion from the board.
Motion to approve?
Okay. We have motion for approval. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Number two, ordinance to permit use of golf carts on public highways in Elmwood. Chief, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Evening.
This is the picture depicting the neighborhood of Elmwood. We completed a traffic study in July of this year, and we fully support the ordinance being passed to allow golf carts in that area. Beats all the requirements, one way in, the speed limits, all the corrections were made as far as we noted back when that was a traffic study, and we feel comfortable making that assessment.
Question for the chief.
Just, I just had a simple question about, I understand the streets on which this would be allowed are all interior to the subdivision, and there's nothing that directly exists as a commercial activity that might draw this traffic out of the neighborhood, is there?
That's correct. No commercial traffic, sir.
Thank you.
Another question for the chief. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Any speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
Close this public comment, look for the board for direction or motion.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion for approval. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next, ordinance to amend the James City County Code Section 20-45 to allow the Commissioner of Revenue to access a penalty for late returns. Richard, Mr. Bradshaw.
Chairman, members of the board, I don't see the commissioner here, so I'll go ahead and take this for him. The commissioner asked that the county code be amended to allow him to assess a 10% penalty upon anyone that failed to file a report mainly for food and beverages. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Mr. Kinsman?
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding this could potentially cause, it sounds like it's more for the restaurant industry, the way it reads, for food and beverage?
Yes, because that would be for prepared food and beverage tax.
So, the treasurer's office already collects a 10% penalty for late fees, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And this would be an additional penalty for late paperwork?
For failure to file the report, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, potentially, some businesses could be double hit?
You can certainly have two taxes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well...
Here comes Mr. Bradshaw.
Well, I'm happy to cede the podium to him.
I would, it's a good opportunity.
No objections?
Exit stage right.
Welcome. Wonderful side step maneuver. Understand there was questions?
Yes, and I think Mr. Kinsman cleared that up, because I'm very concerned about the potential for some businesses to get a double hit, and I'm aware that other localities do this, but as my mommy used to say, just because Jimmy jumps off a cliff doesn't mean you have to, too. So, I guess my concern right now in considering that we have businesses who can't fully staff people, we have businesses who are closing, we have businesses who are struggling, I don't particularly feel, in my humble opinion, that now is the time to add an additional burden, so that's kind of my concern.
Ms. Sadler, I will be honest with you on this. In most cases, the businesses that are filing late, it's not two or three days, it is closer to three or four months without filing.
Maybe we could revisit this in another year or so, but right now, when people are still struggling because of COVID, I have a hard time supporting something like this right now. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. I appreciate you being here.
The question I had was, so this is not with late payment, the treasurer file has the ability to impose a penalty for late payment, is that correct?
Late payment, yes, sir.
All right. And this would not have to do with that, this would have to do with basically just even filing the paperwork.
Filing the paperwork, yes, sir.
Often, how often is it that people file the paperwork timely and don't pay the taxes in a timely manner so that they would be just penalized for one? Is that more common, or when someone fails to file paperwork on time, is it usually that they're also not also paying on time?
They're not, again, in most cases, in fact, almost all cases, the filing is done with payment.
Okay.
There are occasions when someone, and they're rare, when someone will send in a form and no payment. With that, they would obviously avoid a late filing penalty. But they, as I was telling Ms. Sadler, the most common case is we don't get a filing from them until after we have made an administrative assessment three months later.
How, how many cases, I guess my question is, what percentage of your cases do you think fall into this category?
I would, again, it's not a large percentage, probably about 5% or 6%, but they are generally repeat filers, repeat offenders.
Okay.
We have a couple of businesses that decide that they're going to file once every six months.
So, Ms. Bradshaw, I understand the concern that Ms. Sadler raises about the potential to create a kind of double penalty for some folks, and I guess I'd wonder whether there might be the possibility of doing something a little bit differently, and maybe if the real issue is repeat offenders, maybe address the concern through some kind of mechanism to increase the level of fines for people who are doing this on a routine basis. Is that something that would...
That would be a little bit more difficult to do. If there's a late filing penalty, it's going to have to apply to anyone who is filing late and with the potential for being waived for cause, just as the treasurer may waive a penalty for cause, that would also be a possibility here as well. Someone who has filed on time for the last 15 years and just happens to be late once because their bookkeeper was out sick, that sounds to me like it would be a qualify for a waiver for cause. But again, it's something that would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. I was wondering, at this juncture, I'm not prepared to support this, also because of, I do think this is a very rough time that we are seeing in our restaurants, but not opposed to looking at it in the future, but would like to see how many restaurants that we have or food establishments that are repeat offenders, get some data. I'd also like to see if other localities, if this is something that they do, if we could see what their language looks like.
This is almost word-for-word the exact language that's in York County's code.
Okay. Thank you.
In the, they are a little different in the peninsula cities because their collection process is different. Their collections and postings are all done in the commissioner's office. In those jurisdictions, they have an initial 10% penalty, 30 days later, another 5% penalty goes in, 30 days after that, another 5% penalty goes in, 30 days later, another 5% penalty goes in, and all the time interest on the filing.
Do we look at doing something like that to increase, or are we just looking at a one-time? I mean, if we've got repeat offenders, let's say the 10% doesn't, what do we do if that doesn't, if that doesn't work? I mean...
Again, a 10% late filing penalty doesn't work. I doubt that a 10% followed by another five and another five and another five is going to do it either.
Did we talk to the other localities that, has York seen success in doing this, or have the peninsula...
It's been this way for, ever since they put the meals tax on.
Pardon?
York's code has been this way since they put, since they adopted the food and beverage tax.
And are they having success with this additional penalty? Or are the...
There's no way to tell, because that's the way it's been all the time.
But what...
Whether it increases compliance over something else, there's no way to tell.
But what's the difference between the failure rate in James City versus York?
I have no idea.
I mean, that would be, I think, some information that would be useful for us to have as well.
Yes.
If they have this provision and we don't, one would think that we would have a higher rate of failure to file, so if that's not the case, I think it's important to know that.
And also like to know, and I don't know who would be responsible for finding this data out, is the business retention for restaurants, you know, comparable in another locality? Because, again, right now, in the days of trying to keep businesses afloat and everybody's doing the best they can just to stay open, I think business retention would be a huge issue, and I understand we need to collect what is owed us, but if it's going to cause a problem with retaining, with retention, then that's something I...
We are not seeing restaurants closing in James City County.
Well, they're having a hard time staffing them, they're having a hard time staying open, they're having to shorten their hours and their, I mean, anytime we've been out anywhere, that's what we hear repeatedly. So, I do know that it's an ongoing issue, because nobody wants to work, quite frankly. So, you know, until some of this, whatever it is that's out there goes away, you know, I'm not particularly in favor of putting any other burden on our restaurants and our businesses right now, but that's just me.
Question, is there any way to have this for the late fee, or not the late fees, but the ones who get the information in late, can that be tied to their license? If you don't get it in by a certain time, you may not get a license. No, sir. It can't because of? Because there is no statutory ability to do that. Okay. You don't have the power to hold a license. No, sir. They're two completely different taxes. That would be like asking somebody, having somebody real estate be put up for foreclosure because they hadn't paid their personal property taxes. Yeah. After a while, though, that will be, but I understand. Not if, not for personal property tax.
Or...
Oh, personal property, okay. I was thinking real estate, okay. Yeah.
That might be one of something that we might want to look at in our legislative agenda as we move forward.
I just, I feel like we're... You can't, you can't mix taxes. Right. I just feel like we're, you know, you're getting taxed on the treasurer's side as a business owner. I'm getting taxed on treasurer's side, now I'm getting taxed on the other side, I mean, how many more taxes do we need? And so that's, and it, and this is not a stinger, but if we can't tax Wawa for our 12%, then we shouldn't be taxing our citizens for late filing. Mr. Hippel, I want to emphasize this, the food and beverage tax is a trust tax, it is not part of the restaurant's grocery receipts. Right. It is paid by you, the citizen, for it to be turned over to James City County. It is not your normal personal property tax or business license tax. That food and beverage tax is collected from you by the restaurant. It is your individual tax that's being paid on the food and beverage. Right. I understand that. And... It is not, it is not part of the restaurant's income in any way, shape, or form. Right. Just like the taxes on the gas pump is going to our roadways and that sort of thing, too, that we're paying for, so that's another tax in there that, you know, so, but that's seems to be a dead horse. I just have trouble, it feels like we're double taxing on this, and I think that maybe we ought to look at another way to approach it, to bring the restaurants that aren't up to speed, and so if it's only 5%, it seems like a fairly low number. I'd like to definitely, if it's 5% and that's three businesses or 30 businesses, and how it compares, it'd be nice to know that, just to, you know, for more information. There are approximately 600 filers, and we are currently, every month, having to do administrative assessments on 35 to 40 of them every single month.
So, Mr. Bradshaw, I guess the point that I would make is, you know, I'd just like to have some of that information in front of me before I make a decision on this. You know, I think that's an important concern, because your staff time that's being devoted to that issue is something we ought to be caring about, and it may be that that tax that you're requesting would in fact be justified by the increased cost to your office in processing those failures. That would make it a lot more palatable to explain, and so I guess what I would say is I'd really like some additional information, and I'm certainly open to the idea if it seems that there's a good rationale for it, other than just that other localities do it. So, can I suggest that we defer action on this item tonight and ask if the commissioner's willing to provide some additional information or to...
Whatever, whatever information you would like to have, be more than happy to do it. Okay. You want a postponement to...
I'd also like to hear a little bit more about, you know, it sounds like we've got two offices across the hall from each other that you do the paperwork, they actually do the collections, and it seems like the problem children that you have are a problem for both sides.
Yes, they are.
Okay. And it's rare that you have one that just files but doesn't pay.
And I'll be honest with you, I wish they would file, because then we would have something that we could, we could bill out.
Okay.
And put them into the billing system rather than having to sit and wait and do an administrative assessment and then correct it.
I think the question right now is, since they're so closely tied, I think we ought to take a close look at making, whether we want to make the penalty one from the treasurer or one from the Commissioner of the Revenue, if it's upfront, trying to get them to file the thing, and once they file it, they typically pay it, then I would suggest that we probably ought to have a penalty more focused on the filing side as opposed to the collection side right now. At least, maybe if you're going to have a heftier penalty, have it on, have it on the commissioner's side, and maybe do a follow-up of something smaller if they fail to pay it on time afterwards.
And again, that is basically what you find with the, with the cities of Suffolk, Newport News, and Hampton, where they have an initial penalty of 10%, and then followed beginning of the next month by a 5% penalty for non-payment, followed by another 5% and another 5% for a total penalty of 25%. And all the time interest is accruing at the same rate as ours is, 10% interest.
And I think it'd be helpful to have, understand how their experience with those penalties compares to our experience without them.
Yes.
You know, if we have 5% of our filers that are chronic problems like that, what percentage do they have? You know, how big a problem is it for them, given the progressive nature of what they're trying to accomplish with their penalties? So, that would be, that would be information that I think would be helpful to us in looking at this when we come back to it.
And I still, to reiterate, even though this information will be very helpful in the future for us to make a decision, right now, while we're still in the throes of COVID, I just don't think this is a good time to do this sort of thing. It's enough time to start gathering the information. Once things calm down a little bit, then we can, you know, assess that a little bit later on, but I still, I don't think this is being very business-friendly right now while people are struggling to stay open, so that's just my two cents.
I understand the point, but I do think that Mr. Bradshaw made a very important point about, about that, that they are collecting money from customers that is for the tax, and they do have a responsibility to pay that. It's not a matter of, you know, keeping the restaurant in business, it's a matter of passing on money that a customer has paid in good faith, that they are meeting their tax obligations on that food, and the restaurant is just acting, or should be acting, as a pass-through.
Passing it to the county. Yeah.
John, you're looking for a postponement. What date would you...
Would it be reasonable to ask, come back with that in a month, Mr. Bradshaw? Is that information?
More than happy to.
So, I guess for our December meeting...
If your folks can formulate what questions you would like to have answered, I'd be more than happy to take care of that.
Our December meeting, what date? 14th, that's right. Okay, 14th. All right.
I think we should do January, just to be safe. It seems like a lot of, a lot of questions that, yeah, that's going, okay.
January's fine.
January meeting would be 11?
January meeting would be 11.
Motion to defer until January 11th.
Okay, and we won't open up the public hearing. We'll leave that for, do we need to, we've advertised. So, okay, let me go ahead and open up the hearing. Any speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing. And I'll look, John, for your direction on postponement.
We've postponed the consideration of this item until January 11th, 2022. Roll call, sir.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Have good evening. All right, ordinance, number four, ordinance to repeal county code section 17-8, 17-9, 17-10. Liz, welcome back.
Yeah, Mr. Hippel, members of the board. Before you, it's an ordinance to repeal county code sections 17, 8, 9, and 10. In a routine review of the county code, our office flagged this section as potentially obsolete. These sections were adopted in 1954 and require septic tank cleaners to obtain a $50 license. The commissioner of revenue reports that these sections are no longer applicable because chapter 12 of the county code now governs all business licenses. So, staff recommends that these sections be repealed. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Very good. All right, go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any speaker cards?
Sure.
Close the public hearing and look for a motion or direction.
With the adoption of the ordinance?
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, number five, creation of the historical triangle recreational facility authority. Yes, sir, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At your September business meeting, Vickers Advisors discussed the impact an indoor sports center would have on tourism within the historic triangle localities. They recommended construction of 150,000 square foot facility that included 12 basketball courts convertible to accommodate other sports with portable bleachers that could be reconfigured as needed. The recommendation is to build a facility that will generate visitors during the weekend and meet community needs during the week. The facility would provide much-needed gym space for our citizens of James City County. In construction of a similar facility to what is recommended would defer the county's need to build gymnasiums for our community. Formation of a, of a historic triangle recreational facilities authority will allow the three localities of Williamsburg, York, and James City to work together to address the questions of costs, operations, and scheduling for this project, while limiting the county's financial risk to what is approved for the indoor sports facility by the Board of Supervisors. Staff would seek the Board of Supervisors' funding for approval as more detailed project information becomes available and the project is slated to move forward. With that, the staff would recommend the adoption of the attached resolution forming the historic triangle recreational facilities authority. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to address those at this time.
Specifically with this resolution, what is the financial commitment that we have to go through this investigating phase?
Yes, sir. At this point, it is just a matter of staff time and effort. We would come back to the board if there were money required from the county. The authority may end up with funding from other sources, whether it's other localities, the city or otherwise, that could do some investigatory work on our own. But at this point, there's not an expectation of financial commitment from the county at this point. And again, I would come back to you if that were to change before we would make that commitment on behalf of the county.
The benefit of this is that it allows us to investigate and find out what the cost benefits are for, before having to make any kind of financial decision.
Yes, sir. We had a number of estimates, but we had a lot of questions related to operations and scheduling and those that would allow us to answer those questions and bring back that information before you are financially committed to this project.
And just for the public viewing this, I, I wonder if we could just spend a minute talking a little bit about both the financing of it and the utilization of the, of the facility. As, is it, is it not the case that a significant portion of what we might be expected to contribute to the operation of, of a facility if we move ahead to, to its construction will come from funds that are dedicated to tourism enterprises as it is?
There's a couple of funding sources that are involved in this. One is the maintenance of effort money that we have been moving to the tourism council to build a project that would benefit all three localities. That money, at least a significant part of that, is anticipated to be a funding source for this project. The other significant funded source is the city of Williamsburg is dedicating close to $2 million a year on a path going forward, so on annual basis, to this project from their tourism taxes. The other side of that would be, the partnership would be between York County and James City, providing estimated in a half million dollar range per year, not to exceed 750,000. That's the number that we would want to finalize for you. So it's multiple funding streams into that. With the overall return, while the facility, in what we discussed in September, had an operating loss somewhere around a million dollars, and that's being on the conservative side, so we believe that to be worst case, the overall tax impact to the communities was significantly more than that, about a million four, not including your meals tax. So, I believe that the facility will in fact pay for itself. It's just not a direct payment through rentals of the facility. But in the overall taxes collected from those visiting our community, it's a fairly net gain for the communities that are participating financially. Those are some of the details we'd want to work through in the formation of this authority and bring back better numbers to you and also that funding source.
And, and while, again, the, the best case scenario is that increased taxes collected from visitors to the, to the community to utilize that facility would cover the cost. Even the worst case scenario is one where we would be deferring costs or eliminating costs that we might otherwise have to invest in construction of facilities to provide recreational opportunities for our citizens. Isn't that right?
Yes, sir. We have a significant demand for indoor gym space today. And if this project weren't to move forward, you would see that in our CIP program going forward to build gymnasiums that would serve the community but wouldn't have the impact to help our business and tourism-related kinds of activities and wouldn't have an opportunity to provide much income to pay for the facility. So I believe we have a similar cost, whether we participate in the regional sports facility or whether we build something ourselves. But I think the demand is definitely there for our community residents that want and need indoor gym space.
And as I understand it, the, the use of the facility for tourism-related activities would be primarily a weekend utilization, whereas the facility would be available for community use on a Monday through Thursday, Monday through Friday basis?
That's correct. We would, we would have those kind of discussions as part of the authority and bring back a, a more detailed scheduling plan. But the intent is for those things that generate overnight stays or visitors to the community to have priority on the weekends, and our community residents and local needs to have priority that Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. Oh, I had one last question about the resolution that was contained in, in the packet for tonight's meeting. It references appointment of individuals to the commission, but obviously we don't have that. Is, is that, how do we resolve that at a later point?
What we had changed, the resolution read, and again, the other localities have modified to ours. They, we, they had appointed it by position. And what we were suggesting is they appointed, let us appoint two members, more by letting the chief administrator of officers appoint those two members. So that's what the resolution in front of you had for James City County. York and the city have adjusted to that. The intent, short term, is the formation of the authority until we come back to you with funding would be to have myself for James City and John Carnefax to be our representatives. I would make that appointment if you approve the resolution that's in your package. When we get into a funding stage, the intent would be to have an elected official be part of that board at that time.
I was really just wondering about the resolution itself and whether, you know, it, it's, it reads as if there should be names there and there are no names.
Yes, sir. I saw that. That is not, I don't believe that is needed this evening if you approve the resolution that's in front of you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, Ron Kirkland is here with the Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association, who really kicked this off, was a grant that they applied for through the city of Williamsburg. And I, I mean, you all know of how I feel about this, as someone who was in Ohio two weeks ago and is going back to Ohio in two weeks for sports tourism. At the same time where they had Penn State, and then they're going to have Michigan State. So, Columbus was bursting. So, I'm a big believer in tourism. I'm a big believer in sports tourism. I'm also a big believer in facilities for our youth. We are bursting at the seams. And so I'm very excited about that, this. Very appreciative to all the work that has gone into it, but did want to recognize the Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association and the fact that they had kicked this off. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any speaker cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look to the board for-
That, I'll move the motion.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Carries. All right, number six, SUP-19-0006, Hazelwood Farms and the Village Center. And staff has received your request for the applicant to postpone this case until December 14, 2021 board meeting. I will open up the public hearing and leave it open until the December 4th meeting. However, staff and the applicant will not be giving their presentation this evening. Anyone who has signed up for a speaker card during the public hearing may do so this evening or may wait until the December 14th. Please note that if you, you may only speak once during the public hearing, either tonight or next month. If anyone wishes to speak tonight instead of next month, please raise your hand and we will recognize you. So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and we'll leave that open. Anyone? Okay, then we'll leave that open. And let's make sure that this, this goes into postponed to the December 14, 2021 meeting. Do you have a motion?
Sure. So moved.
Roll call, sir, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, board considerations. Is the 2022 legislative agenda, Adam, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program. For the benefit of the viewing public, I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly, and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts. And the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund, and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution, and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there, if we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today, that, that I think it was Chesterfield County, was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board, on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it, and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So, wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay.
If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like.
Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So-
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion on floor, roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next we go into closed session. Consideration of personal matter, appointments of individuals to county boards and/or commission pursuant of section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and pertaining to the planning commission and consideration of dispositions of publicly held real estate at 101 Mount Bay Road pursuant of section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia. Have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
So moved. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Sorry, I was concentrating.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we'd speak about in going into closed session.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay.
If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like.
Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
All right. Thank you. Motion on floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we go into closed session. Consideration of personal matter, appointments of individuals to county boards and/or commission pursuant of Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the planning commission and consideration of dispositions of publicly held real estate at 101 Mount Bay Road pursuant of Section 2 point 2 dash 3711A3 of the Code of Virginia. Have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
So moved. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay.
If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like.
Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion on floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay.
If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like.
Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion on floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay.
If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like.
Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay.
If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like.
Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay. If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like. Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay. If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like. Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers. One, encouraging the General Assembly to revise existing impact fee laws to encourage the use of statutorily calculated fees that reflect the true cost of residential development in lieu of cash proffers. Support of the legislative programs of VML, VACO, the Virginia Coalition of High Growth Communities, requesting that the state adequately fund everything that they're supposed to fund and to oppose anything that would abrogate qualified immunity for our police officers. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend that you adopt the resolution and then we'll have our legislators come before your next meeting.
Not so much a question as a comment. Have you seen the schools legislative agenda packet by any chance?
Ma'am, have not.
So I just wondered if number one is also on there? If we, I'm totally stealing this off of a Zoom I was on today that, that I think it was Chesterfield County was saying that their Board of Supervisors and their school board on things that they both have on their legislative agendas, they do, in addition to their, they will do one that has both their letterheads on it and they send that to their, just for more steam in the engine, I guess. So wondered if we might be able to do, if they have number one on there.
It can certainly work. I'm, I'm familiar with their council. I can work with them to see.
Okay. If they have that on there, we can put it on a separate letterhead if you'd like. Exactly. Just, just the things that we have in common with the school board. So.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the motion?
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Much happier to be up here for this particular one. I have before you the 2022 legislative program for the benefit of the viewing public. I know the board likes me to usually go over that quickly and I'll do that. The three new ones on here were to change the school funding index to more fairly allocate state funds among localities and to raise the Commonwealth's monetary contribution to local schools, to decentralize the Hampton and Peninsula Health District into three separate smaller districts, and the third one was to amend the James City County Charter to allow James City County to refuse to accept bonds as a form of subdivision improvement security. There are four carryovers.
Back in open session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we'd speak about in going into closed session.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Apple?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's okay, I'll just use this. I don't know what happened to the... Call this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors regular meeting to order. Good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. If you could call the roll, please.
Ms. Sadler. Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Apple.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here. I am requesting a motion to amend the agenda to add an item under Board Considerations entitled "Participation in the American Rescue Plan Act, Municipality Utility Assistant Program and Grant Award." May I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Powell?
Ms. Sadler. Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Apple.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. We have no presentations this evening?
No, ma'am.
Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a public hearing authorization to convey property located at 141 Pointa Woods Road to the County of James City, Virginia, and to partner with the county on a certificate application for Mirror Lake Dam. Mr. Powell, you have a staff presentation?
Yes, just very briefly, the James City Service Authority owns property at 141 Pointa Woods Road, for which it has no purpose. As a matter of housekeeping, this resolution would transfer the property to the county since it serves as the spillway for Mirror Lake Dam, and staff recommends approval of the resolution.
All right. Any questions for staff? With that, open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No, ma'am.
Close the public hearing. And is there a motion? Discussion or...
I move the approval of the transfer.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Apple?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. It moves us to Board Considerations, participation in the American Rescue Plan Act Municipality Utility Assistant Program and Grant Award, $240,808. Mr. Powell?
JCSA has been notified that we're eligible to receive $240,808 in ARPA funds to assist delinquent customers. The attached resolutions would authorize participation in the program, authorize an MOU with the county, and appropriate the funds. I've spoken with the county administrator, and he plans to put a companion resolution on your, on the Board of Supervisors' November 23rd agenda that will also need to be approved to move this, move this forward. Staff recommends approval of the resolutions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, is this, you had mentioned earlier that there was funding for this from the previous round that we were unable to use and had to be returned. What are the, if you will, requirements on this that, are there any, will this allow us a greater flexibility in getting help to people than the previous one did?
This is much more flexible. These funds, the CARES Act funds required customers to sign an attestation to, to gain assistance. These funds are going to be distributed by formula, so no attestation is needed by the customer. We, we estimate that approximately 1,200 of our customers will receive some level of assistance from this, from this funding source. But they don't actually have to do anything. It just is, will be applied to their accounts by...
Like getting a credit from the utility?
Right.
Okay.
So the customers will benefit from this, but the, just as importantly, the service authority is going to benefit because we will have, receive revenue.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move the, that we participate in the American Rescue Plan Act Municipal Utility Assistance Program and Grant, and Grant Award.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Apple?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. With that, I need a motion to enter closed session for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation relating to a grinder pump service agreement where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion?
Motion move in closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Apple?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. That, closed session.
Okay.
Motion to certify the closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we'd speak about in going into closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. Any board requests and directives? Okay, thank you very much. General manager's update, Mr. Powell?
Don't have any further updates.
Okay, thank you. With that, take a motion to adjourn until 5:00 p.m. on December 14th, 2021, for our regular meeting.
Motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.